Well, it got quiet, so I guess it's time to call the meeting to order. If able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the visible liberty and justice of all.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item up is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. We did have a blue sign-up sheet, which is empty right now, but that does not preclude anyone that would like to speak to the council to come forward. Is there anyone out there that would like to address the City Council this evening? I see no one jumping up out of their seats, so I would guess that we have no one else to speak at the public comment section over this evening, and so I will close that out. Next item up is consent agenda. All items listed under this heading are considered to be routine by the City Council, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless council members so request, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We do have three items on the agenda this evening. Does any council member wish to have anything removed? Okay, I see nobody wanting anything removed. I would entertain a motion. Okay, Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approved consent agendas, items one through three.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Yadrich?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, next item up this evening is the mayor's report. The first thing we have this evening is a proclamation, which I always love reading those, so we will get right to that. This one is, whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native nations to the International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, and whereas a growing number of cities and towns in the United States have recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day to celebrate Indigenous heritage and resiliency, and whereas the city of Marion recognized it was founded and built upon lands first inhabited by Indigenous people of this region, and whereas the city of Marion acknowledges and honors the historical, cultural, and contemporary significance of Indigenous members in our community, and whereas the city of Marion wishes to preserve and promote the history and culture of all Indigenous people and that the time has come to observe a yearly holiday in their name. Now, therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Marion, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 14th, 2024, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Proclaimed on the 14th day of October, 2024. I don't think we have anyone to give this to this evening, so we will give that back to you, Madam Clerk, later for the records. Okay, thank you. But let's give Indigenous people that are in our community a round of applause, because we have numerous ones here right living in Marion still today. Okay, next item up I have is employee service awards, third quarter 2024. And I imagine Mr. Engel is coming forward, and I'll come down and join you, sir.
So this is an exciting evening for us. We get to do this four times a year. This is where we recognize our tenured employees who've been your five, ten, some multiple of five, in terms of their service to the city of Marion. So this is our third quarter. Folks that in the third quarter hit one of those benchmark anniversary years. So this is exciting time for us to acknowledge them in front of the council for their families and friends and coworkers to be here and celebrate their service. So we're going to start with our five-year employees. Our first five-year employee with five years of dedicated service to our Park and Recreation Department is Cole Server. I think he's not here, but let's give him a round of applause. Our second employee for five years of dedicated service with our Public Works Department is Ray Volga Vongza. He is not here, but let's give him a round of applause. Excited for those employees. Our next employee, who we're going to get to see twice tonight, but for purposes of this particular item, with 10 years of dedicated service to our police department, Christopher Myers. Our next awardee with 25 years of dedicated services is to our Administration Department. This is for Kaisan Boon. We've got another 25-year awardee with 25 years of dedicated service to our police department, Rhonda Roenbach. And then our last, I'm not sure I've ever given one away for this level of dedicated service, but with 35 years of dedicated service to our police department and to the residents of Marion, Chief Darren McGolfin.
That's always a fun time. Chief, just for the record, there is a retirement plan for you. Not saying you gotta go, but... No, that's why you're sticking out. Well, you're gonna be here a while. Okay. We've gone back 35 years at least, so been a joy working with the chief. Okay, next item up is, well, it looks like I'm coming back down, or maybe I'm not. Promotion of Christopher Myers to Sergeant, is that next, sir?
Mayor, council, as is tradition with the police department, what we like to do is when we make a promotion to one of our mid-level supervisors or administrative ranks, we like to bring them to the City Council, introduce them, and then have what we call a penning ceremony, is where the officer that's getting promoted, we have relative come up of their choice and pin their new rank on their uniform. So tonight, I'm happy to present to you Christopher Myers. We've promoted him to the rank of Sergeant, and we're happy to have him starting out as a street level supervisor, taking care of business out there, so. Who you have him come up?
My wife and stepson.
Hand you a sergeant badge? You can draw a little blood, it's okay. Step out of this one once you get a little... You're good. You want a good looking picture. Chris, congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Sergeant. Just for the record, I did photobomb you, so. All right, next item up is new employee introductions. Who's in charge of that? The department heads? Or Mr. Engel?
I believe I am in charge of that. So this is something that I think we might have started a quarter ago. If we didn't start it, we thought about doing it a quarter ago, but we thought it would be appropriate, not just that the council and our residency, our folks that hit those five, 10, 15-year benchmarks, but if we actually introduce new employees to the council, I'd give them an opportunity to come up and introduce themselves and just tell you who they are, what department they work in, so that we can put a face with the name, and then we can let them go back and sit down and hopefully not be too embarrassed to get up and speak at the podium. But we've got a couple of new employees that we started. Michael, come up and introduce yourself to the City Council. Michael is one of our new employees in our Finance Department, but he's going to repeat exactly what I just told you.
Mr. Sir, thank you. Michael.
I'm Mike Larkin. I am in the Finance Department as the new accountant. Started about a month and a half ago to two months on the 19th of August, so I'm pretty new to it still, but I'm really enjoying it so far, and it's been great working with everyone here.
Thank you for coming on board with us, Michael.
Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate you welcome. Welcome, Michael. Next employee we're gonna bring out is Lillian Shank with our Police Department. She just, well, I'll let her, I won't do what I did to Michael, I'll let her.
Hi, I'm Lillian Shank. I'm with the Police Department. I'm the new CSO, and I work in the Evidence Department, Evidence Room, so I've been here almost 90 days.
We don't have plaques for that.
It's okay.
But so far, that is good.
We've got one other person that's next to board. Those are our new employees. Let's give them a round of applause.
Well, thank you both. Yeah, thank you both for coming this evening, and so we know, put a name with the face, or face with the name. And welcome to Team Marion. Okay, so let's see. Next item up we have is confirm the appointment of Alex Supple to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expiring December 31st, 2025. And I got a chance and opportunity to meet with Alex, and it, you know, she's going to be a great asset to our park board. Looking forward for her being there. And she's not here. Yeah, I told you she didn't have to come, so. But anyway, a little, I guess I could give you a little history about Alex, is that she's been here for several years with her husband and children. And she's actually a assistant principal over in the Turner School District, and has her PhD. So she's actually Dr. Supple, which she's, we don't have to address her as that, she said, but she has accomplished a lot, and I think she's going to bring a lot to our park board. So I would entertain a motion, I think. Don't I have one that for? Let's see.
Yes.
Okay, who would like to make that motion? Oh, I'm sorry, this way. We're looking this way.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Hands.
Although, if there's anyone down there who knows her, that's fine. Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I move that the council confirm the appointment of Alex Supple to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the term expiring December 31st, 2025.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second? Go ahead, Ms. Yadrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Last item I have on the mayor's report is, I always like to say a little bit about what the council members and I have been doing during the last, this particular time. It's three weeks instead of two weeks. But I and several council members attended the Marion Police Department Night Out Against Crime event. It was held at Waterfall Park, food fellowship, and crime-stopping advice was provided. Thank you, chief, and please pass along our thanks to all the chefs that cooked up those hot dogs that night. RPD then, on the next day, hosted a Coffee with a Cop event at Povetizza. I and several council members attended that as well. Though billed as a free event, it did cost me some money, as I purchased a couple of lovers to take home with me, but it's, and I would always encourage anyone else that hasn't had their bread. It's very good. Makes great Christmas gifts, and if you might want to know what kind I like, I like that walnut one, you know, just saying, but anyway, it is good. I and several council members attended the Tim Murphy Art Gallery opening night. Great art, great snacks, always pride it down there. If you haven't seen the art, please get down there and see it soon. As I mentioned earlier, I did meet with Dr. Supple over coffee and got to know a little bit about her. I met with Mr. Engel concerning some matters pertaining to the city as we strategize how to make Marion even a little bit better, so there's an extra meeting there. And then I and several council members attended the Marion Drive Live Event at the Farmers Market. We had four bands, several food and beverage trucks. It was a great turnout, enjoyed by many. The band even sang "Happy Birthday" to our Assistant City Administrator Caitlin Guard. Happened to be her birthday that day, and so that, Happy Birthday, yeah, belated birthday now. Thanks, go out to Director Solokam and her staff, and all the park board members, and everybody who had a hand in making that event so successful. I attended the Sherwood Forest Block Party, got to meet several new neighbors up in that area. I encouraged them to make applications for the, because they were in Ward Four, for our vacant council, Ward Four council position, and actually somebody came in and applied, so. My understanding is we have five applicants now that are going to be coming forward, and we'll be looking and interviewing those at our next council meeting, so hopefully everyone will be able to attend that meeting. All of them are excellent candidates, and I'm sure we'll get a good one. I attended the Ovaland Park Fire Department Retiree Breakfast, brought those people up to speed. They always like to know what's happening in Marion. I appreciate being invited over there. I attended the John's County Kiwanis Luncheon. It's a service organization, as you all know, and got to talk to many, many individuals in there about our community. Everybody always wants to know what's going on in Marion, and they're real excited about all of our new restaurants and stuff that we have coming on board, and our Marion Grand Station. I and several council members, city staff, and Principal Jenna Lapinta from Crestview, and Principal Amy Seminole from Marion Park, attended the Shining Mission Education Foundation Breakfast. Great program, it's provided by the students over there, for those who weren't able to attend. And they also talk about, obviously, what's going on at the school district itself. And this year's slogan is "All In For Shining Mission," in case you wanted to know what the slogan was for this year. I and Mr. Engel met with the John's County Commissioner, Chairman Kelly, manager, county manager Penny Postenack, and library staff to discuss economic development in Marion, and kind of what the future plans for Antioch Library might happen, might be going on, and I have nothing to report at this time, but it was a good meeting. I, a council member, attended Ward Three Black Party, and I missed that one, but I did attend, and a council member attended the Black Party on Cary Lane. And there's, man, there was a lot of new people over there. It's interesting to see. There must have been, I don't know, 20 kids under the age of five or six. I mean, that's, we're re-greening Marion, and that's good. Council, let's see, well, okay, that's the one. Okay, I and several council members attended the Ovaland Park Fire Department Open House. Thank you, chief, for putting that on our very own Station 46 upstairs. They gave away smoke alarms and smoke alarm batteries, and gave away some snacks. They didn't have steak over there, but that was okay. It did, it was, it was great. And they reminded me to remind everyone out there that as you change your clock, change your batteries and your smoke alarms, so don't forget to do that. And that concludes my mayor's report. All right, next item up, I guess, is council items. Consider the 2025 Flag Display Calendar.
Hello, good evening.
Ms. Gard.
If you all recall, earlier this year, you adopted a flag policy for the flag displays out front of City Hall and the Municipal Plaza out front. Included in your packet is the schedule of requested flags for the following year, 2025. Those were requested by Councilmember Leahy, and so with that, we just need a vote on the 2025 calendar.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Gard before we entertain a motion?
Just because this is recorded, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Could you review what the full calendar is, so the other events that we're going to do?
Sure, and I'm sorry, please fill me in if I miss one. I don't have it right in front of me here, but we will also be having a First Responders Flag Display out front of the Police Department on National First Responders Week, which is here upcoming at the end of October, at the beginning of November. I believe they're going to go up next Friday, be up for two weekends, First Responders, Fallen Lines of Duty Death. So we'll be honoring those first responders, and then obviously also our Flags for Freedom event that we hold annually.
Any other questions for Ms. Gard? Oh, go ahead.
Point of clarification. The first one, the Pride LGBTQ flag is for the month of June? Because the flag application request thing has some funky dates in it.
Yeah, the dates were a little bit funky on that. We might have to work on that request next year, but the Pride flag was requested for the entirety, for the month of June, for all four flags. There was another request also during the month of June, so we'll be flying four Pride flags for the first two weeks, two Pride flags, two Juneteenth flags for the middle of June, and then the remaining two weeks will be the Pride flags again.
Thank you, Mr. Caller, for bringing that to our attention. Okay, if there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion for this. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Yadrich.
Actually, I think Jacob should take it.
Oh, Jacob? Mr. Leahy?
When you jumped ahead to me, I just wanted to make sure that, I'm the only one who submitted nominations, because this is what we asked for, this is what we all wanted to do. Make sure that there weren't any, I mean, make sure it's not like me carrying the banner for this, that this, a little bit of like discussion, but also did everybody know that these flags were already, had already been nominated?
I understood that when we passed our resolution, we'd already designated that. I don't know if it was a month, a week, or whatever, but there was something already in there about LGBTQ. Is that not right?
No, it was directly by request, filling out the form coming from council members themselves.
Okay, I thought there were two events, I thought it was First Responders and that one. Okay.
But then perhaps we owe you a big thank you.
Yes, we do.
It just happened to come about during June, so.
Yes. Right.
I also understood that Jacob and I communicated, and that he had nominated the ones that I, immediately came to my mind, and that I was going to marinate in it for a minute before I decided which ones I wanted to nominate for the following year. So I shall carry another banner, figuratively and literally.
Thank you for submitting those, Mr. Leahy.
I'm happy to make the nomination if there's no other discussion.
I would just want to, before you make the nomination, I would just like to encourage anyone in the audience, or anyone that might be watching this, that if there's something that you would like to have flown, you just need to contact your councilperson. That request does have to come from a councilperson to actually come before us, but that doesn't preclude anyone from the, our citizens or our businesses, to come forward and ask a councilperson to do that.
We also need to qualify the timeline for it, so anything for 2025 has passed, so any requests would be coming in for 2026.
Thank you, I think for bringing that up.
Before this time next year.
Before this time next year, okay. Okay, with that, Mr. Leahy, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the council approve the 2025 Flag Display Calendar.
Okay, we have a motion. Ms. Yadrich?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like next item up on the council items is Consider Resolution of Intent to Organize Waste Collection Service, and we have Ms. Gard standing there to fill us in.
Sure do. This is our first formal action to proceed with single hauler trash service. We've talked about this on a number of occasions. We held the public hearing for this as outlined by state statute back in August. There is a 30-day waiting period that we are required to do by statute between that public hearing and when you all consider the resolution, which is what is before you tonight. It was included in your packet. I will say what was included in your packet was exactly what was published for the public hearing, so the first part of that, which was actually the notice, obviously isn't the resolution you're passing. So where it starts with "resolution" is where you're going to actually be voting on tonight. But I will say, I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't have a ton of information for you, other than what we've already discussed. I will say we have put together a resident work group to help with the single hauler process. I believe we have some representatives tonight with us. Thank you for your service and volunteering. But if you would pull up the calendar, please? Just to go over the calendar one more time with you, it was included in your packet, a much, much more detailed version of this calendar was included in your packet. Again, this is the best case scenario. Tonight, you'll be voting on the Resolution of Intent to Organize Collection Service, assuming that that passes tonight. Over the course of the next few months, that work group is going to put together what's called an Organized Collection Service Plan. You're going to hear it called a lot of things, a contract, a bid, an RFQ, a collection plan. All of those generally mean the same thing. We're essentially putting together the document that we're going to go out to bid, and then you're going to consider and approve that at the December 9th council meeting, and then from there, we're going to go out to bid. So we won't know the price, we won't know the contractor until after we go out to bid. So that's probably still the number one question we're receiving, to be honest. We won't know that information for quite a few months, but once we do go out to bid, that'll be the first quarter of 2025. We'll come back with that bid, you'll adopt, or you will consider that contract, and then assuming you approve it, we will move forward with a negotiation for that contract and moving forward with single hauler. So again, this is the same timeline that has presented to you a number of times now. Nothing has changed, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy. Go ahead.
It's not really a question, but I can form it as one if you'd like, but just because there's still, I still get ambiguity in questions about this. This is the process to solicit bids to know whether or not we would like to implement single hauler service.
Correct.
Not, we're doing this all because we're going to. We have to solicit bids to form, I guess, to know what our contract will, to know if we get a bid that would be worth adopting or accepting.
We can back out of this process at any time, but this is the statutory process we have to go through if we want to move forward. Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Chaveta.
Just to clarify, the state statute has only been in effect for a certain amount of time. Everyone else in the area that has single hauler didn't have to use that state statute because it didn't exist.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
And I may be months early on this, but I see in the schedule out in April that we then have another ordinance that establishes it. Does that include the specific hauler?
Yeah, that'll be the plan, essentially approving the contract.
If we are not happy with that hauler, do we have to then have another ordinance and another plan?
We'll have to write it into the contract, essentially an opt-out clause or a termination clause of the contract. It's going to be a number of days. The work group is going to help establish that in the bidding process. When we put together that organized collection plan, part of those bid documents are going to be essentially out clauses.
Okay, so every time we change vendors, we have a new organized collection plan that becomes an ordinance?
Correct. It will be a number of years, though. The contract will recommend.
If we're satisfied.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is hard to get my head around. This is a pretty laborious process.
It's almost like they made it that way.
Go ahead.
And then just one more sort of comment question. And there are, on the resident committee, there are people representing each part of the city, correct?
Correct, yep, representatives from each ward.
Thank you.
And we thank all those vendors that stepped forward and...
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, for your service. It's going to be, be interesting, and, okay, go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
We've been very careful to get our citizens' opinions on whether they want this or not, and I want to, once again, thank you for putting that data in the packet to remind us. But because this weekend, I experienced multiple conversations with people where they weren't fully aware that this was going on, even though we did have public meetings and we sent out postcards and other information like that. If people want to go on the website and still give their opinion, that is... and still give their opinion, that is still available for them to utilize, correct?
Yep, we have a website set up specifically with this information. It does have that form where they can fill out to their heart's desire, merium.org backslash trash service.
And we do get to see those.
It's always good to get as many comments as we can from our community. And that's one of the things I would encourage all the council members to do as well. I know I've been doing it as I attend these black parties. I, I don't tell them what I personally think, but I ask them, what do they think, and let them know about it, because like Mr. Silver said, we don't always, some people don't even know that we're talking about it, and, but, you know, please do so. Let's get the word out. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Gard? Okay, I would entertain a motion then, if we want to move forward with a resolution. Okay, Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council adopts a resolution stating the intention to organize waste collection services.
Okay, we have a motion. I have a second. Go ahead, Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Ms. Gard. Next item up is evidence staff items, the October CIP update. Looks like we have Director Kumpke at the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The update is in your packet, and you can feel free to ask me any questions about the projects. I do have one update since we wrote this and put it in the packet. The 75th Street Bridge, Overland Park has negotiated with Pyramid to be the design build, and it will go to council on November 4th. So, they will start the whole design-build process. I don't know construction yet, but I'll keep you updated as I find out more.
But we've already approved our bid. That's, is that true?
We've approved the budget.
Right.
Yes, the agreement to cost share.
Okay.
And it should be within the, the cost.
Hopefully.
Yes.
Any other questions for Director Kumpke? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
Out of curiosity, how close are they to finishing up the Stormwater project at 48th Town to 50?
The 50th and England project?
Yeah, 50th and England.
So, they have gotten all the pipe in, and they started lining last week, but they had to pull off, so they're gonna be coming back. So, really, the lining, a couple Stormwater inlet tops, and then they'll do our sod restoration, and they should be done. So, we're pretty close.
It's looking really good.
Good. It's always a matter of, as you've learned from other projects, getting the sod contractor in, because they only have so much time to do it, and so they, you know, it's, it's a busy time to try to get that in, but that's the next step.
It's always good to remind the sod contractors, the green side's up, so. We're gonna dig him any laughs on that one. Okay, any other questions for Director Kumpke?
Maybe that's been the problem this whole time, though.
All right, well, I would entertain a mo, oh, no, we don't have a motion. Excuse me, I don't have any motions for that. And we're just, that was just an update. If there's no other questions for, then thank you.
Thank you.
For our update. Informational items, we have Park and Recreation Advisory Board Minutes. We're in our packets. Does anybody have any questions for Director Slocum concerning that? We appreciate you attending, and someday, maybe you'll be able to speak, but right now. Oh, yeah, yeah, you did. Okay, it's all good, it's all good. All right, well, let's see. We have an executive session or anything this evening, do we, Mr. Engel? Do you have anything else from staff?
I would just echo the mayor's comments earlier. Thanks, Marion Drive Live, fantastic event. Our volunteers and our staff can't do it without them. And then we did have five candidates for the Ward Four vacancy, so there will be an election at the next. We have shared that process with the public and with the council already. We will send out the questions, which are also public, to our candidates this week, so they've got ample time to consider them before the next meeting. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Engel? Wow, I see no questions for Mr. Engel. It's not a record, but if there's no other business before us, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Ms. Hands.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion. And Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, second.
We have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.